I will call the board. I will make the motion we got the gentleman's mail. Second time.
Aye.
Aye.
Just to clarify, I said, uh, I'm from today. Do I have my superintendent saying options with those six things to follow? You're explaining each one. Uh, which I need to remember last question where I said it's about self improvement here for correction purposes. Our school nurse is a pre-tal, uh, accounting help director in the same form. And we have project specials at KDHE which are maybe in progress. At the end of this, we'll make a few questions. Now, is this very effective, gentlemen? And we'll begin such a way.
Okay, I'm just gonna go through some close. We've put together some close contact guides. Um, so I want to define what a close contact is. Define as someone who has had a direct contact according to the following guidelines. Within two days or 48 hours prior to when the case started having symptoms. Or if the case was asymptomatic two days prior to the date the samples collected. So, a close contact, you mean you were close within six feet of a person or 10 minutes second minutes, had contact with the person with respiratory secretions, infected by cough, or sneezed on, kissed, contacted with her tissues, shared a drink with glass, food and towels, or whatever. Live with the person or stayed overnight, at least one night, asked of the person within 48 hours prior to when the case started having symptoms. Or if the case was asymptomatic two days prior to the date of the sample was collected. So, one of the options that we're looking at, we're looking at, we've looked at three different options, um, for, we're gonna count the last one, this part, uh, three. One of these is option one, a status quo to continue to explore this contacts. Teach the host daily videos in class sessions for, uh, each subject to that student in access to their desire in relation to be assigned over, that's the individual classroom or providing homework packets. That's the plan. Benefits of that would require a change from the existing process, and it does not count as a recording, and thus avoids our 48 hour rule with that. Risks and challenges of that depend on the student's name of appearance, access videos, help on a self-directed basis. So that's steps. But option number two is a mask mandate. This would be a full mask mandate for all full, uh, for all facilities to use equal opportunity. Um, you'd actively be permitted by building to address the higher risks associated with students who do not qualify for vaccinations at this time, uh, and be able to choose one. Benefit of that, you know, that would provide a safer home environment for students in accordance with the OSH County Health Department, um, no quarantine is needed, or close contacts are asymptomatic. Um, the challenge or risk of that, there are very different viewpoints, so they affect us on the mask mandate. Option three is, or is some direction from, uh, KDHE. The test to stay a room friend provides the resources to test susceptible close contacts daily during their quarantine period with the goal of keeping close contacts who test negative onsite and in-person learning. Participation in this testing strategy effectively reduces or eliminates the need for close contacts to miss school in person or in-person school after exposure to a case. And we bring to form the power to do that. Obviously, everything with COVID is fluid and changing rapidly. Because, uh, they haven't been through the day, daily schooling process, students that are under school exclusion for con, close contact would be required to have private transportation. Students would be eligible for transportation, for returning home after school, and would be required to wear a mask. The reason for that is we would be doing the testing at 7:40 AM, and right now we believe the middle school gymnasium would be the best place to do that. And that screening takes no less than 15 minutes, um, and they would do that every day during quarantine. Testing would be performed by student school assistant nurse, who would need to hire additional assistant nurse or nurses to help facilitate that. Due to sensitive student staff information, the entry would be done by the head school nurse. Over time, it would be required as part of that. Students with a negative test result would report to the regular classroom, but must wear a mask at all times, excluding lunch while eating. Students would be provided lunch, uh, in a designated area. If a student's found to have a positive test due to these testing, they would be immediately isolated in a designated area in the middle school gym, and the parents and the county would be notified, and we would begin contact tracing for the two days prior to the testing. The positive contact designated area would be thoroughly cleaned each time it's used. Benefits to this plan, this plan will allow us to have students attend in-person learning, mask up. Uh, the risk and challenge, if a student tests positive, it would require additional contact tracing. Close contact students will be sent home until the testing can be done the next day of school. Depending on the number of students, the time to administer the test could lead to students arriving to the classroom late, possibly disrupting the classroom progress. Some students may have challenges obtaining private transportation to school. Granted, hurdle, additional staff, supplies, and training will take time to put into place for this plan. As a part of that plan with KDHE, there's another section to that. Uh, the test to stay in play and participating plan provides resources to test susceptible close contacts daily during their quarantine period with the goal of keeping close contacts who test negative, participating in extracurricular activities, and school-based events. Participation in this testing strategy effectively reduces or eliminates the need for close contacts to miss extracurricular activities and school-based events. And this, this would allow or would follow the same steps as I just described on number three, so I'm not gonna read back through those. Students would be required to wear a mask for participation in the extracurricular activities unless they are able to maintain six foot distancing during outdoor events. This plan, uh, benefits would allow us to have students attend in-person learning, and would allow students to continue to participate in extracurricular activities. Some of the downfalls of this, planning if a student tests positive, it would require additional contact tracing. This could or would include potential exposure to an entire team during the extracurricular activities. But depending on the number of students, the time to administer the test could lead to students to arrive late for class. And some students may have challenges obtaining transportation in that plan as well. So both of, really, three, a combination of four when you, uh, when you look at test to play, participation.
Just to start over here. I'll take a little question I have right now from what you presented under option three. The second from the bottom that says that the student's found out to have a positive test every year, is that contact tracing again from the rapid test that we're getting?
It would.
It would.
Well, at least, I'm gonna ask the experts in the audience, but as I understand, what I've been told is the test that we would give is a, uh, let's see, if I can find that. It's a binex antigen test, and it's 96.1% uh, active, so that does count as positive. Unless, if I misstated that correctly. The name of that test would be a binex now rapid antigen test. It's a low nasal swab. When I say a low nasal swab, I mean it stays right at the tip of the nostril, doesn't go up the nose, you know, you're not doing that. It's a, it takes 15 minutes to do that test, and very good training to do the test as I understand it.
Uh, in regards to option three, as far as the additional duties and potential help, is it, is it possible to have anyone help Lisa, right now it's Lisa, an assistant, if anyone is willing, like, from the public essentially to go through the training, to help out, would they, would any of you, uh, assist me sort of that thing?
As far as I understand, the training is, um, doesn't take much training, and you could probably do that. I'm not sure if you're not, you can just have volunteers do that, but what that means like mentally wise or anything else.
So, uh, the binex now training, can, and we can have that screening, uh, because of the hour long training, and that's not, that's just for the liars and downing, that's not for the, at their time account. There's a low nasal swab, and basically the training, you have, uh, a transcript version that they should, uh, are, would consent to, that they could have to be trained very quickly. So if you wanted to use anybody from, um, the department, and Oakland, all the way down to, uh, the air volunteer, that's fine, with the liars now training, with the PCR test that has to be led by a certified. The age of the test, just be, the age of the test can be done by, in this training, the PCR test has to be done by, uh, the, uh, the nasal swab, uh, the low nasal swab that passes, uh, by, uh, the health and the partner. The fact that is very, very sensitive information, the real one, so not professional care related, something that's higher in training, if that laws that go along with that.
Do you guys, I mean, you guys are okay, you're on that.
Nobody online for parents, and it's.
So I would just explain about how the tests are done, but, um, she absolutely stated that people have to remain against that.
And more than likely, I'd have you guys speak up a little bit too. Online is struggling here, everybody, but joy.
Sorry, I can't speak into a microphone.
Thank you.
Um, so, the testing absolutely can be done individually by, by students, by family, by staff, um, all the way up. But I absolutely agree that we also have to take into account a lot, and we need to make sure that that information is, um, held tight, and that we are making sure that if somebody tests positive, that that's not coming out to everybody in the school, um, that we're making sure that it's, it stays confidential.
Right, so if we stand that topic, hurt us a little bit, you know, these persons, if this is an option that we go forward with, I would prefer about someone we hired to come in with this, as opposed to a volunteer that, you know, things may come up, and then maybe they can't show up to the morning to do the testing, not totally imperative. Um, and if I had this, probably it takes two people, so one person to test, and one person to prepare. So it's gonna be imperative, we agree, we do have someone in place.
Absolutely. So the part of the grant funding is about salaries, and so you can look at current people that are employed by 420 and, um, give them some sort of stipend. You can also hire people, and we'll pay for that. Right now, the grant is for one year, and then we're looking at the next two years to be able to support that. So, yes, we absolutely want you to have the staff that's available and can be hired to support your district.
And as it is, we've looked at another assistant to Lisa in that career.
I, I continue hearing that.
I said, uh, as it is, we're, we've looked at the grant, and we've discussed hiring another assistant nurse, if we can find that first.
Absolutely, and that's what this grant is there for, is to support your staff that's already present, as well as being able to hire additional staff, um, to be able to support, um, testing in schools.
Uh, we get to the situation where testing is, a lot, a lot of students, uh, can we require parents to, uh, test offsite and provide proof of testing? Is that, would that be an option?
Through the funding, it's absolutely an option. If you want to have parents come in and test physically onsite, that we're gonna send you supplies to be able to do that. That is up to you as a district, though.
Not to do the test, not to take the test, but actually perform the test, was his question.
They would have to be trained, definitely.
Could they, could they have the test done, uh, I guess privately, being through another medical professional, then provide, uh, prove when they've tested?
That is up to you as a district. KDHE is not gonna step on your toes. We're just offering you resources and.
With this training, it has to be done in school.
Yeah.
It has to be done by certi, by.
Testing onsite, thanks. But if you choose to go that route, where parents or caregivers or anybody's testing offsite, that's a conversation we need to have later on.
I'll move forward.
If a student falls in this category, how many days in a row must they be tested every morning?
If they already direct contact, I'm not sure that they would be tested for 10 days. That's how long it would be for. Now, if they, if left to, they didn't get tested by a PCR test on or for, on the sixth or after, and then you get out of quarantine, so you may submit whenever that test comes back in.
And it's important to understand also, if the close contact isn't in-home contact, so they still have to be at home during that specific amount of time, and then their quarantine period starts 10 days after, um, the positive case is out.
That's super fun. They are disagreeing.
Day one. Especially for 10 days, what's that?
After the initial.
I don't know. Day one.
Well, KDHE follows the guidelines of your local department. So that's.
They change every other day to have.
To be in all of the local departments. Part of your school, your student, anyway, again. So I almost understand where we're at. So where we're standing.
So, um, if you do the test learn, the student, uh, just say, um, has a contact on Wednesday, they would come in Thursday morning, they tested Friday morning, and that's if they did not need testing, we can anywhere. Then they would come in Monday, they would be tested for the next 10 schools. Or, if they wanna go get a PCR test on or after they exist of that 10 days, they would make that negative test, PCR, they can contact on a 7th day, whatever, how long it takes.
So what is that, your profile change regarding in-home contacts, where they, the contact is literally in-home?
Well, we have always said household contacts, hey, in 10 days, if one of that household person is positive, it's a nice location, they need to stay on the 10th day, then they can come into school on the 11th day, and be tested, but today, KDHE said in their webinar, that is not what they can come in, they won't.
Well, I apologize, that's not the intention.
That's a decision that we can make there, right? Absolutely, that is, it is a home quarantine, because there is a positive case in that household, we can choose as a core to not let them come in and go through this, test to stay learn, or test to stay play, or participate.
And if parents, they always have the choice, if they don't believe in testing, they have a lot of still eat, out to the next screen, if they don't.
That's a good point, right? And I think it's important, so KDHE gives guidance, we know it can land it, so whatever your school district chooses to do, and whatever best for your community is what we're going to support for our community.
So, just so I have an understanding of the number, um, our recent cases have affected how many students?
We were at eight. Eighteen.
So, eighteen students will be determined daily for basically six days, six mornings, eight mornings?
Sixteen.
So, fourth period, be tested every morning, six days, eight, sixteen.
And then I also have to add, there's a positive that for, then contact tracing can begin for each one of the positives. So if they're looking at 20 people testing the first day, it's an example, they're going to get a positive, and 20 people, the probability is very high. And that does occur, from the contact tracing can begin with that positive individual, so you're looking at adding more students to the next day testing.
Okay, so let me repeat that with just one minute. So let's say, it's gonna come really loud. Let's say I'm the positive person at school, okay? Kelly, Dave, you are considered my close contacts. So, now you're coming in for those 10 days, being tested with a low nasal swab. If at any point, uh, wanting to get positive, now you start doing the close contact tracing with that person, in addition to still, you're keeping the other ones, and now you're adding that, and you have to track it. Okay, now, hey, now we've got 10 more here, and this is their 10 days, if that's what they choose, maybe still this one that just has a couple days left, so it could just grow.
Now, so, so I can understand, assuming the students, so we did say, when they're going through the test to stay process, they will be wearing masks at school as an extra, as an extra precaution? If, um, I guess there are scenarios where the close contacts would be the same close contacts of the previous, especially at grade level, with masks. At grade level, with close contacts, scenario would remain pretty, uh, constant, but grow obviously. But what went through my head when we were, um, saying that is, remember, as a reminder to all of our parents, that kids can still wear a mask, and if your child didn't, if your class has a high contact rate of 15 of the 30, and your child is wearing a mask, even though they're not, like, one's getting tested daily, that they have, well, half the class is out, maybe I should put my child in a mask for 10 days, so then they aren't, so now the contact has a mask, and your child, I'm not calling him the innocent one, but you know what I mean, you know what I'm saying, is wearing a mask, then they're, they do not have to live quarantine, correct? I just wanna remind everyone that it is an option, never said, don't make that argument. Just to remind everyone, I just was thinking through how we can help ourselves as situations are ebbing and flowing. Would you, can we ask, um, we obviously had a situation last week that took out a majority of our fourth grade, um, have we had another one?
We have had a little cluster cases, yes.
Not just in the fourth grade.
I, I was just, I mean, I'm trying to make an educated decision, but I don't feel like I know what else is going on either, so.
I think that's a good question. Those kids are turned, are they correct, from last week's?
There are.
How many kids were missing school today?
Most of them are turned.
That would be my question. How many kids were missing school today from?
So there's 10, eight, or two, here, please.
That's not my question.
I don't want a percentage, I think. I don't know if we can give numbers, but that's just one I want to put out there, are we allowed to truly give numbers?
I'm gonna ask a question. They're positive.
I don't even have a rating here, I'm just curious.
So we had another incident in the local today that took out a camp of students. You have some positive cases, low, medium, or high? Like five?
Five, ten.
Not a five.
So, I have a question, and what are you guys? So, when we test kids when they're in the quarantine process, or, we're actually making sure that we don't have any kids that are possibly coming into their school, so we're there too, there's, we're making sure, like, if I'm a child that's kind of sick, and we send them to their house, and the ones that are not sick or long, who's staying at school, am I understanding that right? Is that not policy, the reason for like this, is to be able to put kids in school, sick kids out of school?
Yes, I can, can I even make a comment to what, um, the person in the audience said? Is that numbers do not violate any laws. It is absolutely okay to give numbers to, like, these family members, all I can think, it's okay to give out numbers.
Well, I have been told that you gotta watch phone if you give really low numbers in a situation that could be, I don't know.
Absolutely, and FERBA really works very well with HIPAA, and, um, so with FERBA, you still would not give out any demographic information, anything that you couldn't find out for yourselves by calling the school and saying, hey, my name's Wendy Harpwood, and I wanna know the name of this child. That's not information that you're gonna give out, so any information that you wouldn't ordinarily give out, that is protected under both HIPAA and FERBA.
Everybody start talking.
I know, I'm sorry. Okay, so, just to compare, we've got the test to stay learn and the test to stay play participate. Is there any difference in how things would be carried out, or is it simply that it would also involve extracurricular activities?
Is, is I usually, I mean, it's the same process, in those kids, I think, I've explained it, I can't see the difference.
So even if they testing this, that they would be required to wear a mask during participation? That's what this just said.
Inside.
Not during the day, just during.
Inside, um, this, this probably needs to go back to term health, but, uh, what we, what we interpreted was if they were inside, they'd have to wear a mask, outside, in social distance, six foot down.
Exactly, so if you can social distance, your, um, individuals that are participating, that's fine, it has to be able to be free to escape. Um, if you can't do that, so call, uh, so I'm thinking about outdoor sports, high-risk outdoor sports, so call, um, baseball in some situations where they're in a dugout together, um, volleyball can easily be spread out and not have that direct contact. Indoor sports, such as wrestling, things like that, where they're absolutely in contact with another person, we cannot keep that to see what difference, then they need to be wearing a mask off the playing field, off the mat, um, and they can have it off when they're actually participating. So if you think, even if we walk through debate for, um, So if you think, even if we walk through debate or choir or things like that, choir is, that is a huge problem. Because everybody's singing until all that stuff is coming out. So we want them to be masked when they're not singing, and they can be unmasked when they are singing. Band is the same type of situation where you have, unless you're a percussionist, most instruments have a wind that goes through to the instrument. So they need to have their masks off while they're playing their instrument, but it has to be on when they're not. Does that make sense to everyone? But that's also up to you guys. If you guys determine, if you're, I know, if you as a district determine that we don't want our students masked during this time, then K D H can support whatever we can to help you through that process.
All right, so really the big thing for me is the risk that's over here in this column. There's a lot of things seen in the way, right? You have to go through the grant process. You have to find a willing resource to come in and help. It's like we've got to get the PPE, the parent training will be very long, but for me, this would be a several weeks out.
Yeah, we have to jumpstart the process just in case that this might happen. It's a little bit of a case, but you've got to wait on, you've got to wait on the CLIA approval, which has been soon.
There's not, by the way. We're coming out in about seven days right now.
Yeah.
I heard from our superintendent today, there's three weeks for him. But I don't, I'm not happy with it, I guess that's what I heard.
I'm a holdup, so I don't let them go that long. My contact payroll, I'm like, this is submitted, when are we going to get it?
So you are?
Pardon me?
You're a lot of work.
Yes. So I'm a holdup, absolutely.
We have to wait for the people before we can potentially post a position, or?
I don't think you have to wait to post a position, but I don't know how long it takes to get paid for the grant. Now, that's, the CLIA is different from grant application. Grant applications, two to three weeks.
Not even that long. It depends on how, hopefully you guys have done an amazing job at giving me information that I needed. Once you submit the budget, then I'll go over it and talk to my supervisor to see if there are any questions. I will reach out to the grant coordinator and have that conversation. Hopefully, you've had that conversation with the grant coordinator as parents and individuals of part of this school district. Then it goes to a first level approval process. Once that is done, then it goes to the second level approval process. And this grant is fluid, because we don't know what COVID is going to look like come December, January, February. We don't know what it's going to look like. And hopefully, it won't look like last December and January and February. But it is definitely a fluid budget, so that you could go back and say, "All right, we didn't need to hire somebody here, but we really need this money here." And so those are things that I would talk with the grant coordinator, and we would have those conversations. And if it needed to come back and hurt you guys again, then we'd have that conversation.
We've got the process all out.
Well, we just can't determine. It's, I understand that you can be minimal, expand it as much as you want to. But it's just trying to decide what you need for your current situation, even if that is the degree.
My budgets have been anywhere from, you know, four to five thousand dollars to over two million dollars. So it's just as less more.
It's.
What's the topic we're having on that grant approval? Are we talking, are we talking to get it turned around like ten days or is it possible?
That's up to you. I've had some that have been turned around in a week, and I have some that have worked directly with the school board, some things like that, that have taken a little bit longer. Once I get it, I turn it and have no questions, and definitely I would, it will be that we have had multiple conversations about that budget, and then turn it over. And then by the time that I turn it over, it's about two or three days.
So it's time for the test to be there, right?
And then, so reimbursement is done on a quarterly basis. So funds that have been spent already between, you know, July, August, and from April, May, June, July, and August, those are going to be paid out in September, and I mean fiscal quarter starts. And so you're paid fiscally on that quarterly basis. And I would work directly with your fiscal contact in terms of how that funding is released. We work directly with Kansas Department of Education, because there we provide funding in a variety of different areas for all of our different districts. And so instead of trying to recreate the will, we are just working through the Kansas Department of Education to have that funding reimbursed you.
So let's do one more. Just like, yeah, just a minute. So let's move on to consent. So, again, let's just say that we go with one of these test to stay learn, test to stay play participate. If we go as an option for parents, you know, we've got to offer them a pay either choose to stay home, you know, and do a home or you can choose this kind of close contact. I'm imagining some type of consent form to where they're saying, yes, I'm choosing this option, and therefore anything happened to, you know, I will leave my school. Or if my kid honestly does not follow the rules, right, they don't keep their mask on like we're requiring them to, they could be excluded from this program. Is that something that we could do, that we should do, just to kind of cover everything?
Consent forms are an absolute must. So parents can opt in to be a part of whatever plan is chosen. And parents can say, if we're not opting in at all, which would mean if your child is unsymptomatic, if your child is in close contact, they're going home regardless. So they don't, unless the parent regarding chooses to say, I don't want them to sit at home. I am going to consent to them being tested daily, that's fine. There has to be an informed consent.
I'm doing a paper. I said I flooded it. Oh, Brent's next.
Yeah, on your, you got any questions?
I'm operating. I'm mixing finishes.
Uh, it's off. I think you're trolling, I think you're doing, I need to yell at everybody else. I'm not sure exactly where we're at.
All right.
I would refer to Delta, you have a second.
Do you have, I guess I have a question for you. Do you have any of the districts that you're working with that have been using this test to stay and learn plan? And how's it going?
Sure. So that's a great question. Since school is just starting, and we're just starting these programs. I have Topeka Public, which is USC 501, and USC 383, and Silver Lake, which is 452. Sorry, I can't remember it off the top of my head. But they've already implemented these programs, and it seems to be working well. They're testing on a daily basis those close contacts. One of the biggest hurdles that we're going through is making sure that they have the testing supplies available, which comes to me and making sure that I talk with Cahill and get those things sent out. But they're working on it. They have a really great response from their community and from the families from each of those districts. So putting it back to you a little bit, tell me a little bit about what you're feeling like. What's the social measure of doing testing in schools like that, can work maybe?
Well, I'm informing my opinion as we say, I would say. I will wait for Jay to finish asking.
I would always be, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm not interested, I was just curious. Obviously, our community is a little slightly smaller than 501, just a little bit, but I was curious how it was going.
Well, I also have 38398, which are not the same size as you guys. I think it's important to have a vibe from not only the school board, but also from family. Why would we do this? How is that beneficial to us? And what can we take from this? So that's what I was asking. Like, how are you feeling as a school board that the community faces? Boy, do you react to this.
Well, I can get to that. I'm not sure yet, but my next question, I think, is for Sandy, what your thoughts are. And then I want to raise that as well. The people in line, it's your view.
You're right.
And I think that the test to stay and learn and play is fine. I think it's kind of what the people want, you know, we just kind of, I know Mirasay Gallas can start it soon, I think. I don't know if we're working on it. And the other districts are just kind of still trying to decide what to do. There are pros and cons about it, like there is everything else. It's a good program. At one time, we had, K D H E last year had put in modified quarantine, where the students, even if they were quarantined, could come to school with a mask and be isolated. And they decided that didn't work very well, but it's still, it's outdated, but if it's approved by health officer, I have one school still use that. Yes, yes. And they can't go to just a regular class. They can only be in one room, isolated the whole day. Yeah, and they're doing test now too. So that kind of was in play in July, and then we found out that it's outdated. You can still use it with the permission from the health officer. If you don't go with any other recommendations, then you're going to have to do your own thing without the health officer's okay, then you start looking also into some of Japan. But I'm okay with testing to learn. I think it's a good program, and probably the best way to go in this day and age. I worry a little bit about Lisa being a little bit overwhelmed with the testing that's going on and inputting everything plus being a nurse. I was a school nurse for seven years. And I was pre-COVID, I was busy all day. It's like really running, maybe eat all of it, and it's busy. And I also think if you're going to take into consideration that you should do maybe two people.
I'm just going to suggest that.
If you want to give that person that's doing the testing every day, should have them give quarantine, which is an option, I mean, you know, that's always there. Or get the flu or get sick, then you're not going to have anybody to do that, and then the whole program's going to fall apart. So you're going to need a backup person to be trained to do that.
Well, in this system, I'm assuming with contact tracing, et cetera, I ask if they need to come.
And they're going to need the proper PPE, of course, because that's back to Wendy's, but.
The most important thing, I think, is that we all work together. The school board, the school superintendent, the health department, we're all going on the same path. Because it all works, we're all working together. So that's super important. And I was going to say that some backlash from the public county, the health department, not getting that support, but I spoke with them already twice today. And their ones support will be guys and as parents, and it will decide for their ones.
Okay, Lisa, what are your thoughts?
I think that the question we're addressing here is how can we allow our students, the most students to remain in person regarding their social, emotional, physical health? So we have to weigh advantages and disadvantages with each option. With the mask, if we're going to wear a mask, we would alleviate any contact tracing. No one would be sitting home besides the positive individual, as well as household members that are positive. They have to be in our district. That's a benefit. No one likes masks. No one wants to be in one eight hours a day. But if that's something that you guys decide to do to be able to maintain the more students and staff in person here, then that's a decision that needs to be made by a lot of people, the board, administration, and have, you know, community input as well. I also do feel that there is a lot of benefits to the testing, but with anything, there's always room for error. I don't really want to say false positives or false negatives, but with any sort of testing, you have that. That is the risk that we take. And there is also a risk of quarantining a lot more people if we do have those positives pop up. I think staffing will be an issue, so if that is something that you guys do adapt, like we've talked about before, it will take time to receive the materials, not only testing supplies, but you're looking at PPE, portable air purification systems that we need to be in place for the gymnasium that we'd be using in the morning, and staffing as well. So as our representative from K D H E indicated, I think that we need to work together and decide what's best for our community.
Well, I'm, I'm ready now.
So if we're going to options, we're obviously calling options three and four for test to stay. When I look at that, it looks like it's pretty much if he has a sick or quarantine, they say it's cool with masks. But we're going to know who's sick and who's not. The mask, I tell you, you will never know who's sick and who's not. So it's simple to school, they're going to go out in the public, and nobody's quarantined. In that way, nobody knows whether they're positive or not when they leave the school. Is that right? Or is it just a mask?
That is correct. I do feel that it's always been and always will be the parent's responsibility, as well as the staff members, to stay home when you don't feel well.
So is school quarantine, is in-school quarantine, that doesn't stretch outside of hand school? So if they're quarantined, they have to quarantine when they're not at school. So we like that happen, and parents will support that, although this is what is happening in our school setting, not outside of school.
But I also think, Jay, I don't know if you have time to say this, but this popped in my head. By doing the onsite testing, we could actually be more helpful to our community in meeting all these asymptomatics. If a kid is asymptomatic, he's in close contact, wears a mask, but he's also going to be very very much for a lot of night, could be for sick, I mean, without even knowing. So meaning, if we are doing a bit more of this test and play, and we could possibly grab more, we might have more positives, but actually, it might be better for the community to know. Just to reiterate, we just. I think it's a great resource overload. Oh, I don't think we can start it until it's in place.
We're just looking through these, and to Lisa's point of, hey, if you do a mask mandate, that is the easiest thing to do from a resource perspective. If we choose to do this option three, whatever that is, we just have to be aware that that could be a resource overload on the administration and everything put together on the adversity perspective, making sure we have everything, you know, there. Here, it's right, always remember that they have to be there by 7:40 to bring their kid in for testing on the first day, they need to provide transportation. It's just so helpless. We need to be able to meet the community.
What are the, what are the ramifications for a child, a kid, or a mom, or a sister? As long as there's terms they need, people have their needs. And are there terms they need to hold up their needs to or not?
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. What are the ramifications for a child that is wearing a mask?
Yes, and did they miss out on getting the terms they need to be part of, or the terms that aren't needed for.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
When I was thinking, I know it's more of a story, every year, you have an outbreak of some kind, sickness, usually strep throat or something like that. We're going through that, right, and we're having to test our, so does this change two weeks or not? I don't know. But I can say this, that the mask, I'm not a big fan of it. I think everybody knows that, but this option three, I like it for two. If it's one, you know who's sick and you know who's not sick. And that benefits everybody. We can also, I mean, it's sometimes, the parents have to be a part of this. We can't.
So my question will be in that regard, if the parent does not follow through, if they don't get that job in when they're supposed to get tested, what is the penalty? What's going to be coerced in from the school's perspective? They don't attend school, they don't take their test that day, they're delayed, they, if they take it late, they're negative, they get schooled. I mean, there's, either it's a detailed, it can be kind of bad.
The test is good for 24 hours. So if they take a test at nine o'clock in the morning and then three o'clock in the afternoon the following day, that's longer than a 24-hour period. We also don't want to have a stigma put on our students and staff members that is uncomfortable or, we don't want, KTHA is not wanting that happening. Yes, we understand, all of us do, that COVID is real and it's happening and it happens to people that even are masking and washing their hands and doing all the things that they're supposed to do. COVID doesn't really care. It's gonna, it's out there and it's gonna happen. The goal right now is to mitigate that as soon as possible and as readily as possible. But we also, again, don't want to make students stand out and have some sort of stigma placed on them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I think that that must have happened. And I could go, even if, even if it's not in detention, the kids are going to know who's not in class at eight o'clock or even five.
I agree. I full-heartedly agree with you.
Yes, parents are going to know. I mean, it spreads like wildfire, so it'll be happening. I'm just, I'm just more concerned with if the parent doesn't buy in, then what is the recourse from us, school district, to hold the parent accountable?
That is, excuse us, school district.
I think we said, we don't buy in, sorry to interrupt, but I think they said, we don't buy in, they will be excluded.
Just what we're doing today.
I mean, if the parent opts out, the consent form would be the same as if they're not following the rules of saying it, I would say. So if they further define that they may not just be that your child is not wearing masks, because typically they can drop them off. Right, and they're testing. Yeah, define that as a best.
And then ultimately, that calls on the teacher to police up for that child either missing or missing their test in the middle or not wearing a mask appropriately, then it calls on us as teachers to make sure we have to work for them. So I would encourage you to be clear outlines of what happened. Because it's really hard to gather a bunch of stuff, you need somebody to come in that day and they miss it. You know, we have, we need outlines of what we're expected to do as well.
I mean, I'm just kind of more concerned with the ripple effect. That I understand with the staff concern, this flies, the time, all the extra effort, but there's a ripple effect that goes down through the rest of the school. Whatever building you're in, to the admin, to the teachers, to the parents, there's going to be an effect. If the parents don't buy in and help out.
That's kind of why I asked, kind of how you feel like your community, most importantly, your school community, with how they respond, what's it like?
Some hate it, some will love it, some will, I will get 10 emails saying one thing, I'll get 10 emails saying another. I will have the doctor tell me one thing, I'll have the doctor tell me another, just like every school is.
That's my case.
So, I mean, just to be honest, we'll be a bad people no matter what we believe. Our goal is to keep kids in school. Our goal is to have the most education that they can get and we know that being in class is the right thing to do. I think we all just need to make a decision, do we want to, they keep them safe, sorry, keep them safe. We don't want to add extra burden to our staff, our teachers, students, the parents. But this isn't going away, let's be clear. We're here to help make things better. The last two weeks have gone, I agree. I think if the last two weeks have gone great, we would have maybe just September 8th, 9th, but we're not, we're here. So let's, let's just, okay, if we have any more questions, let's just make a decision. My favorite, so I do want to hear from the art council admin and get their opinion because a lot of times we're just all talking, but we don't let them actually say what they think would be best for their school. Is that a thing?
I got one more question. Have we seen a trend, like, do our close contacts, are they returning healthy on time or any sick kids missing?
It's too early, it's too early to say. I don't have any documentation. I can pull out my in-person see what KTHA has found out, but it's really too early. The school's just now starting to open. I don't have a current address.
For our district, Lisa?
And as of last year, we discussed the last quarantine, there was one student-to-student transmission within the school district. That was all last school year. And the only thing that has changed since this school year is that mask mandate has been lifted. And in the first two weeks of school, there has been one student-to-student transmission. Can I answer your question, like? Kinda?
Great, you also have any?
Uh, I thought you said you wanted to, um, sounds like, uh, one of the, and four of them. Uh, one, whatever, uh, for choice. And I got number two, it seems like it's definitely in a survey, so it was a month ago. There were a lot of people who were not saying they're mask mandated. Right now, what I've heard, and I've been asking, and I don't know where it's based, but it sounds like it's, uh, uh, number three, uh, maybe stop. I can get a little bit of information on your force of conversation, but.
I think that's for the administration of, hey, what do you think, we're not more ready for your hearing from the staff of these options?
I think for high school, it's a little different for us because our kids are able to get vaccinated. So I assume with vaccinated students or staff, that they're not going to get quarantined or subject to testing if they're a vaccinated person. So I don't think it's a big deal for us. I am in favor of not sending healthy kids home. But again, like Cory said, there's going to be a ripple effect we don't even know about. And I am concerned about what that kind of burden's going to put on everyone. I mean, all the way from transportation to breakfast, to teachers, to bed students, how that's going to affect. And that ripple effect, we just don't know about. That is a concern.
For the middle school, I mean, I know it may not be a popular choice in the community right now, but last year with masks, we did find, I mean, the kids didn't like it, teachers didn't like it, but it helped keep us in school. But that's the number one goal, to keep us in school. And that would be, my opinion, is to go with masks and keep people in school. Whether you agree with it or not, that's what the county says we can do, is have people in masks and they stay in school. So if that's our goal, keep people in school, and that's what I think we can do. Like I said, I go back and forth on it, and I'm also vaccinated, but if I'm told I need to wear a mask to keep our people in school, I'm going to wear a mask, and that's what I'm going to do. So I support, you know, whatever decision is made by the board, I'll do, but I mean, that's my.
Probably I would know what that was because I wrote you all the letter last Friday to send out to you, that I think that having a mask mandate is our best bet to get them into school because we can't get vaccinated. Do I like it? No, nobody in my staff, no kids like to wear those masks. But when we all do it, they don't even think anything about it. It just becomes natural to them. And Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, was our flu and our strep, did it decline last year because of mask mandate? That's just something that's positive about that. And I know parents don't like it. I think it's kind of like Kelly said, you're half and half, you know, but I do believe in the mask mandate. And I, you know, my husband and I will go back and forth because he hates them and I say the same thing. I don't like them either. But I know it's a proven fact that last year, we did well with masks in our, we had kids stay in school that sometimes went home with flu, or they went home with strep throat, and they did not come home last year. So I would stick with that too. And I'll do whatever the board wants us to do too. I do think it's going to be a lot, a lot of work that outside people don't understand that. Inside people, these people sitting out there in the audience, our school related people, they understand how much work this is going to be. You guys know how much work this is going to be. So I really want to make sure when we do something like this, if we do it, that you give us time to implement it. And that means that we may go a month with juggling, are we going to wear masks or are we not going to wear masks? What are we going to do? So those are all things that I think we also need to decide too. Because like Kaya said, if you don't tell us what to do, we won't know what the direction is. And then it's going to be, oh, he said it, she said it, and then we're all still confused ourselves.
The other board has made it, this is a mask for blackers and all of them. And I'm paying attention to, you know, who's sick, who's in contact with it, it's kind of like easy.
Of course.
You can't say that, sir. I don't, I respectfully, I'm not allowed to just stand up and say that. You can't say we all know masks for, for those who didn't care. You can have a opinion, you're a person, but you can't say we all know masks.
I just wondered, when everybody was masked, did we pay attention to who's sick and what's in, who's close contact?
I think we did. We did.
Well, nothing, we got a two-way.
I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, let's, maybe forget it. We're all here, don't forget us about each other, so.
Could I ask something? So if you plan to move forward with utilizing the KTHA EOC funding option, you're stuck with me for a year. So I'm here to support you. I was a teacher for a lot of years, so I absolutely have that kind of stuff. I also have been an administrator, as executive director, for a while at a school in Ohio. So I can get all those different backgrounds, I have threesomes, so I raised them, they're grown, and so I understand all of those aspects. And so my goal is to be here for you, if that is why you choose to be as a school board, to be able to help those parents, to teachers, to administrators, all of those different aspects, so that this program works effectively, so those ebbs and flows and those ripple effects can be worked out directly before they become huge titans.
Is the grant still, is the grant for the test to stay applicable if we would make a decision to do something different by school? I'm just curious.
What do you mean, do something differently?
Meaning elementary mask mandate test.
KTHA is not going to require a mask mandate. Anybody that is in close contact, that is, has an opt-in from a parent or guardian, pass a mask during that time. If you choose not to do that, then that's not part of the funding.
Are you talking about in the middle school, you have to learn, but all that you can do is. And the high school?
In your high school.
Or is this just a district law? I think, I, you know, I'm not romantic that, but I think it's definitely feasible that I have to be honest with you. Like, I'm not going to step, but if you want to work through that process, definitely tell me to get my supervisor and director involved and say, here's what we want to do with our.
I don't know if it's what we want to do, I was just curious.
I don't know, that's the issue.
So if you chose to save the option three, which is the test to stay, and the numbers continue to blow up, and we already have that in place, and then all of a sudden, put a mask mandate, will the grant allow us to still be testing?
Yes.
So what can you do about it?
It's a flexible, yes.
So by getting into the test to play, it gets us into the bracket, gets us to extra helps when we have everybody in place, and then we still have options, we're not locked into that, so numbers change that.
Exactly. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. And so that's why I like the flexibility, is that we can change with the needs of our specific district.
My, my, with all due respect, my only concern with that is, is we do have students that walk throughout the whole retirement. Like, we think, well, you've got high school students that help with the elementary, the high school person, so I guess. Yeah, and you'd like to put you in particular, everybody is in. So to me, you have, I mean, if you separate it out, where it's in the elementary mask, and to me, a student, whether it's most for high school, it goes into that, or you could also have more masks. Does that make sense to me? To me, that could be.
Why don't they give you a perfect option?
Yeah, no, I agree, but I'm just saying, like, you got a lot of the interaction between all of them, it's not just the elementary, those full masks.
Is there an expiration date on this program? Do you decide, you want to go to one way and then there you decide?
There is not, there is not an expiration date, and it's very fluid. So if you decide, hey, we want to start with this, these options, and then down the road, you're like, this is not working, or we need to support in different areas, then we can adjust that as well. Which has already happened in this month of August.
Great, any questions? No, I'm sorry. No, I mean, I'm comfortable with what we've done. So is there separation, do you have a whole total over there, and what? Ask a question. I definitely have, I have an option. Where it's totally answered, I'll just start the direction, but it's still switch from that and that person.
Does it sound like it hurts to get, you think, on something, something considerate? As far as time?
I guess we can always change that, but right now, the numbers are a lot lower than us in our board. So we have, there's some stuff we can do right now, but the office on this. We're not going to pull off that mandate. And if that, if that's going off, it's a lot of, it's a lot of.
Yeah, so I think we have a decision, right? Is, you know, is there an option that we want to move forward with today? And we have a backup option, right? So I'm just speaking for myself, you know, my own opinion here. It was like, moving forward, maybe the test to stay, they participate so that we can get the resource request out there, right? See if there's people that are homeless, and then determine between, you know, now and when we need, have everything we need to get started. Do we use that quo in that timeframe? Or do we go by school building and say whether we need a mask mandate until we get that replaced with a test? So it's like, I think we have a couple things to go through.
No, just from my personal opinion, it all sounds good in theory, but having kids, I don't even learn the practical side of this. I'm not sure, back to my earlier question. 16th fourth graders or, I think, you know, a lot of the grade school, going in every morning to see how effective that program is going to be for the kids and how they accept that and continue their day going through. That's a big question. I've read a lot of stuff, but the answer obviously isn't right. And what we found, try it out. Having to go through this test myself knows the toll of why it is uncomfortable.
This one isn't.
This one is. Well, I have those, but I also have kids who are after that. Maybe get about a first or two. And I don't know how we can contain them to be starting six, eight days. It's just, it's a bit of a black hole. I think we'll have, I feel bad to do this. Sadly, I think it's a good point. If you were coming out with a mask mandate, what would it is trying to prevent that? I don't know. I think it would be a good step if you were coming out of something like that, trying to get back to another mask status quo or a mask. Give it a try, has problems. I think, I think we need to adapt the practicality of this when we go to the test state.
I think there is a big social emotional aspect to any decision that is made for our students. They may be scared to go home and stay there for 10 days in isolation and not be able to attend school. But then on the other hand, they will be a little bit, some of them scared or apprehensive to have a test for 10 days. So I think that, whatever decisions made, we'll have to work together as a team to, you know, work with our students to ease their fears in any decision that is made. So again, that will take time to come up with those plans and things like that.
Have you ever been thinking about what you were saying about? Just like how? Just second. We're gonna find it. I wonder.
You have to see for your life.
Come on, sir. I'm wondering. You have to see for your life. Here, yes, she said social emotional. No, I was just thinking about what you were saying about how kids will handle that situation. And I really think that in any of these decisions that you guys make, the staff buy-in is what's gonna make or break, you know, how kiddos handle that. If you got, you know, someone's testing a kid and they're like, hey, we're just gonna do this, we're gonna do this real quick, and they're like, ah! Then they're probably not gonna think much about it at all. I'm thinking, well, you know, but if you, I mean, if it is scary to them, and if it's someone's making it kind of intimidating, I think you can see how that would be, how should I do this again and again and again? But I also think it's just kind of all on how we make it with it, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, so I think we need to at least move forward with trying one of these option threes, just to see if we can something that we can. So we all start by making a motion that we move the process forward in doing the test to stay play participate to move the grant forward and see if we can get some additional resources.
Aye.
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 I was just inviting the group to try out. Can we get the grant rolling?
Yes, we can get the resources and I need a date of the next four days of where we're at. Except for the order of dates.
Absolutely. Who is gonna be my contact?
That's me.
And who can have access to that? What are you, is the next meeting? Will that be for us? Definitely pass on to you by then? Or would you?
I think you might as well.
I think Troy, yeah, Troy would be the contact.
I'm listed as contact. I believe. I think that's what we set up.
Nice to see you. Yes, so that's my contact. So all we want to do with the contract is, and it can be as small or as large as possible. Just being able to be in there slowly just sort of processing you guys and then.
Can we start on the staff?
Yeah, we, I have those two additional staff members.
And once you, what I already said, districts is that what you get?
Once you get through that first approval process, so there's two different approval processes, once that first approval process is done, start coming out as healers and making sure that you've got postings available. Because that does.
I think he's gonna make the motion.
Oh, okay.
She said.
Well, I would, I would probably over two positions for nurses assistants. And that is, may not necessarily need to have any kind of certificate or.
To be able to do the entry testing? They not. So you hire CNA or CNA, RN, hire a brand for as long as.
Do they, do they need to have any of those? Be my question.
For the clients now, and to the test.
Which is the one where you.
You not have to have.
But they only.
The only training they need is what you guys.
Yes.
So they don't need a.
No, but for the PCR test, they.
So I would make a motion with the administration, two positions in the order. Second, can I?
Aye.
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 Talk more details, maybe next week, say, right? There's nothing that technically around here is right now, because we don't know if we have resources to.
So currently, we will stay in the same protocol.
So I think that's one of the discussion, right? Is from here until we get everything, do we stay with that as well?
What do you need? The testing is a lot, it's a lot of.
What do we need in the meantime?
What we need.
Like, unless you're in a budget, it's, like, I have not a budget, but he's in just a base budget and still inputting it applying. So unless you're really committed to be part of that, and that's in that budget, we can.
So if a budget is initially placed, it can be changed relatively soon.
Yes.
We were just. We were just discussing that there probably, and I understand that I don't really know what all goes into the testing. I mean, I did swap my daughter at Walgreens one time. But I do know that there would probably be staff members that were willing to help in certain situations, if you're doing seven, forty, to eight o'clock or whatever. I, I volunteer to do, to help out. If this is something that helps our school district, but helps our kids stay in school. But I do, and I know that I don't understand all of what goes into it. And I'm just trying to say that I know that there would be staff members that would be willing to, she said stipend, I heard it, to help out. And if we're already here and things like that. So I just wanted to put that out there that, I know I'm saying it for myself, but I do think that there would be staff members that would be willing to do that. So, and I just felt like, we talked about confidentiality, and we talked about keeping the information as, you know, in our school as we can, not letting everyone know about it. And maybe that could be a way to help with that, was kind of my mindset there, so.
I've seen stipends anywhere from three hundred to eighty dollars per month per teachers that are taking on additional tasks that have to do with testing in schools. So it's out there.
Teachers, before you get to a stipend, remember, you have a lot of time for classes.
They make a budget. It's just, just that it's out there. We want to support you guys, you know, to have staff that are taking on different roles and goals. And we want that to be supported.
And I love the idea, and it's, and it's gonna get to do so much all the time. And so you're giving up fifteen minutes of your morning. Again, I don't know all the specifics either, right? Like, there's gotta be so much more of contact raising and documentation that I think we just keep going.
Yeah. So, yeah.
It is a situation where people are training just in case, you know, in case something happens.
I would have you to.
Anticipate it taking longer than fifteen minutes, probably past eight o'clock in the morning. If you have ten students that you're testing, and each test will take fifteen minutes, then you have to go around and say, you can go back to class, you have to stay. And you have to call parents, and you have to contact raise. So I'm anticipating, perhaps I'm wrong, that it'll take longer than twenty minutes in the morning.
Each test.
Same here, what do you think?
That's not a good idea, you're only taking longer than twenty minutes. Yes, I'm just saying, I don't know if it's a good idea. I mean, if the teachers are staying there at eight thirty or nine. Well, I have a question, is that, just to make sure we're clear. That is not my understanding, I guess, when I'm having to get these quick rapid tests, like, I'm gonna go through one. It isn't do one, this kid waits fifteen minutes, then do one fifteen minutes later. You do one, and then I'll wait. I just wanted to.
Yes, and then apart.
Yes. But they still have to wait.
At one forty five, or at one forty five.
So.
Twenty.
Troy, I would agree with you. Yes, if there are all these positions, we need to figure out.
Lisa, no, we're talking about, we're talking about Lisa, for now, full-time position, assume two full-time positions.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
I don't.
We don't have to say it.
Right. And that's the one I'm gonna do against. That's.
But that would all be harder.
I got one more question. Do we have to administration? Does this solve your problems with what you're going through now? Got a couple of figures that the police state.
It's my understanding that we're gonna go to staffs close, so will it solve the problem that we had the fourth grade parent? Not until we get this in place.
But the fourth grade kids, basically, they're not.
Have them.
I think all the three were black.
So that, that's, that's kind of.
But not a central cabinet, it's not like.
Three of them.
No, it's just gonna.
Could be fifth grade tomorrow, could be first grade.
Realistically, I don't think we're throwing it around. We'll be two weeks out, a month out before we have what we need and know what we're doing, start further.
Troy, I will have a long conversation after tomorrow, so we can really develop that budget as soon as I can get that budget submitted to me and then I can submit it to the first level, the pool platform. We can get that as soon as we need.
So we're gonna have.
Your deal is, are we gonna get a higher test?
Yeah, we have. This CLIA takes about a week, right?
About seven days.
So I don't see a start any of that. And then probably, probably about the same depending on where we get that grant submitted. A week, a two.
I, it wasn't submitted, and I can, whatever, from another budget, whatever else, like, I can redo it to make sure that all of the things look correct and then.
So you can do the.
Oh, absolutely. You can start testing without.
Right, so there's a chance to get all this places in.
To add weeks. Imagine if first. I can reach out to KGH, I think I just.
I'd love to talk.
You're kidding.
I'm thinking realistically.
I think, but it's massive, it's like.
But I think it's the hiring process, right? By, you know, the two resources willing to do this, getting it in place. And, you know, it's like, I know that, I think it's just grade school maybe that does, you know, the IT. It's a digital check, like, so many other things going on at this, and kind of probably just. After that. Two tasks taken.
I think so, the longest part is that we hire. Because you're gonna put your posting out there, but you're gonna have to do the entry process afterwards. Coming off the two weeks, so that is definitely the longest part of the process. And getting the funding is much easier than hiring. You're correct.
So we're sticking this down school.
I'm not sure if it's gonna pay. So we kind of actually. So max paid.
Right.
Is that a real question?
I hear.
Is it possible that now with COVID, we'd be on September eight?
I think so, I think starting out all works better. If I was, if I was a base budget and then on eight, you guys can look at that and maybe it, however you see it. But I think that's.
Please tell me if you're all over that.
Okay, we think we'll have to change the time for you.
Over seven days a week right now, they all, we thought it's a, it's a long question.
Question.
I'm thinking, this is how, this is so weird, how is some of the people here are like in the office? I think it's like, can you, can you wait until the eighth? To see, you know, where we're at between today and the eighth, you know, potentially more. All the cases, post contact, and then they. I think it's like, can you wait until the eighth, to see, you know, where we're at between today and the eighth, you know, potentially more, you know, off the cases, close contacts, and then making decision.
My concern is our administration places the mask, had fixed the problem last year, here where you've got the problems, and they're still, essentially, while we have to put here, and they pick a candidate, or who's involved, do it right now. Try to get this thing together, together, look, there's options, possible to come out, and if you've got a problem, you can solve it. I do question, practicality, and even though it sounds a bit serious, having doubts on the practicality, and, you know, the effects that it has, the reference value, is kids getting yelled at, and on testing, the amount of resources it's gonna take, the people, supplies, and everything else. Just question practicality, like the mask, or administration, or management, we need them to get a better list before it does become a problem, that's an honor, my personal standing.
I have a question, um, I don't know. I don't know, because I never happen to my grandmother. Um, I'm just wondering, if it comes to my class, and is wearing a mask, and then takes a mask off, how do I know that kid has been required to wear a mask? Because, isn't it against decor for me to say that, and my personal, how could they tell me if a kid's supposed to be wearing a mask because of the viva, is that correct, or am I incorrect? So, how do I know which kids need to wear one, and which kids don't need to wear one?
Fantastic question. Yeah. Great question.
No, and nobody wants to.
I believe that would be a simplification.
So, the fact that we're gonna be stuck, I don't know. But they just got tested, they just received a viva.
But they wouldn't know that. But the teacher wore a mask, did anyone just say that?
Because for the class, if they're positive, they're.
But they're in the morning, they usually have a mask.
No, I'm not saying that they shouldn't, I'm just saying, that these teachers, remember, the reality is, and studying with you, and her being, or, uh, whatever, but, and all have ways in school, like, to hold your mouth, or you want to wait, or, and like, to be a, or a. In here.
No, I'm going to accept it.
She just asked if you're willing to wait, so she called, oh, geez, the.
Oh, I waited this long.
She's willing to wait.
My boss has a phone contract right now, so if you need me, call me. I will say that is a very common, um, problem, that kids walk down the hall with a mask, their parents might tell them that they're supposed to wear a mask, and we as teachers have no idea if their parents have asked them to wear a mask, even if we said, hey, let us know, and they take it off. So, that's, that falls back on us again, to know who's supposed to wear one, who's not supposed to wear one. Um, but all those teachers did take a viva and a viva. I'm on the hard side, I don't know if we all under being able to know those things or not. I mean, it's not a friend, it's nice to try, and we might have a better answer.
I will say that mine, at Pock, per him, he's the only kid in the ninth grade that wears a mask. And he gets, kids are not nice about it at all. So, his agreement is, if he gets a seat in the back of the classroom, where everybody's projecting forward, he can take the mask off, but if he's in the hallway, he needs to put it on around other kids, but I have no idea if he's doing that or not. I know my youngest does, but I don't know if he does, so yeah, it's a problem in the classroom. So, kids are actually, they get stigmatized for wearing one.
Are you okay, Mr. Evans, please?
I just want to understand clearly, what is gonna be the trigger, the protocol, for a student to have to go test it under option three?
If they're close contact, or.
How is that being determined?
Based on contact tracing. I'm answering for you, so you can answer it if you want.
There is, it's, um, the school and the personnel, as well as administration, in collaboration with, um, where students sit in a classroom, or where they perhaps may be in a situation where both parties are not masked. Thank you. All right, bye. Bye. Good.
Bye. All right, bye.
I have an answer. Um, so because COVID-19 is a public health crisis, HIPAA laws do not fall into that category, and so teachers should be aware, but who should be masked and not masked.
So that means we can go ahead and do our tracker like we did last year, so we can keep the teachers informed about when the kids are gone, and when they get a return for class. Yep. That would be so helpful, that helps to.
That's awesome, I did not realize you guys were here to help.
That does not mean that I have to share who is positive and who is negative, or whose parent is positive, whose parent is negative, or household number, there will be return dates only.
And we need to be masked. That's it, so no active physical records are being given out. That's fine, she does, the teachers take it, okay, this is my classroom, mask. That's one of them. They can't hear online, they can't hear online.
Oh, so, no, so no public records, or, um, health records are going to be given out by these wonderful women. Um, it's just the fact that teachers are gonna know who needs to be masked in their classroom, who needs, who is not gonna be in class, who is gonna be in class when they're coming back, that kind of thing, that's fine. None, no other health records will be disclosed.
Awesome. Sounds like that could be helpful. Wonderful.
I've been through this for two weeks, and I commend today for realizing that this thing can, and not go anywhere, and that something needs to be put in place to, and I think our organization is continuing to grow, and the back, because the two administrators have said what they feel, and you do that, thank you.
I do too. I'm having internal struggles, because I'm doing what's best, and that's our administration's their plan, and we're not doing anything about it. And, um.
I make a motion, meantime, when it goes to mask activation, that we get those processes in place.
I'm just gonna make a different, for each building, or each state.
I'll second that. No? Yes.
Please, Dave.
Brent, did you hear that?
No, I didn't, I almost knew.
Uh, so require a mask mandate for the entire school.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we require a mask mandate, page six, kids that can't get masks, masks. I'm saying page six, because I think the sixth graders are twelve, or eight, or eight.
Most of them are not.
I make a motion, page six, mask mandate until or further discussion, until the.
Hey, we, we're gonna have a constant question, basically, what's the percentage, entire, of the school, what's the entire percentage, student and facility, or any staff that are going to. I'm reading, and what was going to be five percent? And the reason I'm asking that, it's last year, McGee, he was saying they made it five percent, and we called, like, we saw, the only time that changed was pretty early about that.
Can I move down into building?
It doesn't need to be probably, there's some total numbers, your institution, or, I think, you have to go right out, it's two point five.
Two point five.
Two point five, do you have building?
Do you have building?
Data for now, as of August twenty-eighth, two, eight point eight percent of our elementary students were excluded related to close contact received in school. Middle school, two point five percent, high school, six point six percent.
The high school? That was as of Saturday?
Yes.
But then you just said half the fourth grade, not fourth grades come back.
Yes.
So, we have a motion to drop.
That's a percentage of exclusion related to close point, or, close contact within the school.
But that wouldn't include what happened in this room, today?
No.
Okay, Mr. Evans.
Sorry, one more question.
No, that's okay, my motion is okay, all right.
So, what was, what was the beginning?
My motion is page six, but it can fail, and you guys can make it, I think it's appropriate, but.
I'll second it. No? Yes.
He's saying I. I.
Brent, did you hear that? Yes.
There'd be four to three, yes.
Now, I just, until option three, that was my motion. Until we get everything.
And if your staff are vaccinated, have to wear masks? In elementary, is that the normal, where they do have to wear masks in most schools?
I would ask my, it being correct, because I'm not, I'm not a professional.
I am not a professional.
Oh, well, I agree with you.
But, uh, it truly depends on the whole, so I would continue to, uh. Because if the news from high school kids don't have to wear masks, because they have to be vaccinated, and I'm an elementary staff, or somebody vaccinated, I feel like I should also, I mean. I can tell you, as a school board, that mostly, if your staff is fully vaccinated, then they go, I'm not vaccinated, that's a big, but again, it needs to pass the, if we're, uh, the whole.
Can you ask personally, that's what you should ask?
Uh, this is what I want.
That's what they put out?
Oh, yeah, good, good. It's true, that, all. All your vaccines have. Do you have? Okay, yeah. I need to know, I actually look up through the. I think it's the right name, I'm picking the wrong thing, it's a little dark, I can't really, it's a little sad.
Right, I'm just asking questions, does it?
Time out.
When we model, we gotta get it all. You're saying, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna ask, it's good for.
I can make that.
I'm talking to Tim, Tim just said that if you require the kids to wear a mask, then the teachers are responsible for masks, because they're gonna model what the teacher does. And I agree with that, I'm just saying, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
I, I do think that the law, the nature of teacher is absolutely important, because they're, like, tonight at home, the worst kind of, of word of town, represents that they're, 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 so, definitely, that would be an awful thing, if, uh, teachers were wearing masks, but, these, not the young kids, that were.
I have, I'm looking through the, along those same lines, uh, do you have staff, that are different staff, who have students that enter those basic buildings and classrooms? If those students, if I'm unvaccinated at all, or I'm an unvaccinated older child, and I'm not wearing a mask, and I go into that building, and I suppose those kids can't be vaccinated, I mean, because I'm not wearing a mask, they have it, if I'm not, I mean, what's gonna be the criteria there? Should everyone who enters that basic, be wearing a mask, and it doesn't need clarification, because those situations will occur, I'm all working with.
It's pre-K through five, six, so I'm gonna make an additional motion, I'm not talking about everything. In the building, pre-K through five, anybody that fits that, and it means our best. Sixth grade's a different building, but not, so pre-K through five, because that's the building.
But I have TAs that come into my group, that are high school kids, I don't want them coming in without a mask on.
If they come into your room, they're gonna have it with a mask on, because right here, if they come into.
We can just say three K through five, I'm a sixth grade teacher, three K through five, I'm a sixth grade teacher.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's why I want, I mean, you get three K through six, if you walk in, and then out, and cross.
How would that be different than them walking down the hallway next to the seventh grade?
Is it time frame, or?
That's what I have to say, is once we just, I didn't. So, if we're gonna first, we would, we would pay, what?
I have a date, I would do, but didn't, that we would revisit on September eight.
So, that was good, recently.
Meaning, if our administration is saying, from now till, or we're being, we get supplies, or no more mountain test play, we need to do something to nip something, that is what our administration asks about. If we're here, not to be, but we're here, so we get option three.
Well, I would, well, you know, well, if you don't, then it, it will continue.
It will continue, right, if you don't have the, whatever, I'm just saying, right.
Sorry.
I'm just saying, if we feel like, we need a week, except for thanks to some rebound, to help everybody involved, I count out the partners who are shaking their heads, yes, then, that's what my motion is. Let's help. Yes. Uh, just a question, how about the kids on the bus, if you have pre-K, and kindergarten, first, second grade, third, fourth, fifth, sixth graders on the bus, as well as other kids, ask them.
Even in a, uh.
So, I just wanted to make a review of that, so we're.
I'll make a motion right here, just a second, because I believe in option three, it says on the bus, may I have a mask, correct?
Yeah, so you're obviously, the, the.
I would make a motion, thank you today, until we change it today. But basically, you're gonna have to go there, that a bus, mask mandate in, to make option three work, it's all the way in the question, we go in, and we're gonna have.
Wait, so, why do you mean that makes option three work?
Because in option three, you gotta, on the bus, they're running, actually, they're talking kids, and they're singing out, I don't know, I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
So, I agree with that.
Yeah. You are correct. But if we split the masks, we can take the option 3 in place. Those same students that even were, were tested to stay and wear a play. They would ride the bus home in a masked mask. But they're also getting the classroom with a mask on, really just to make it. So I don't know why.
But I think the answer is, I agree with you, right? On the bus, they have to have a mask on, and then option 3 exactly.
On their way home after they tested.
But the other kid. The other kid, she has to wear a mask once.
The KTH guidance is that anybody riding the bus should mask in general, across the board.
So that is not just option 3, I was saying just.
Across the board, that's.
You want to reset it? This, this program. I think before, full mask. But it works. I said we gotta get the option, or re-able the option. Or able, we have another A, I'm not sure, could be to be able to.
Yes, this is.
I'm sorry. Um, how about school events, we have volleyball games and so forth, and those young kids are in our building? For the event, so we're at a volleyball game, are we just saying, oh, well, no, we didn't, or are we gonna make that a minute for those young kids? I'm just, I'm just trying to ask quick questions.
Other, all good questions, sorry. I did not make it though. My, my grade school administrator asked the board to put it in place, and I can't sit here in good faith and not do what she's been asking us to do. After our hearing, I counted out the shaking, her head, yes, I just changed my head. But I like it, I'm sure you agree with that, plus you're her. I'm not assuming any of these kids are vaccinated, but it's mostly their.
We have a good reason. They get vaccinated.
They have, obviously get vaccinated, they haven't had the classroom issue that I've heard of until today, that I haven't had administrators come to me and say, I would, I think this will help at a grade school year, this classroom period, to keep the kids in school by doing this. I'm suggesting that we do this for seven days, well, now it's four, three, seven more school days. And let's revisit the topic on the 8th. Because it's gonna continue, it's, it's rapid fire, and it's continuing to spread. And there is some belief that this is helpful to some. And it sounds like the kids, once they just put them on a second nature, from what I hear. It's seven, it's eight days.
I agree, it's a speech, that's a problem. That's a problem, my heart.
They, they take it on during speech, and they have the device. Stop calling teachers. But he, he self-wants it like the time, he talks, he, he has a mask, which probably doesn't mean he's, because he don't realize you're not the teacher, but without a mask.
There's psychological and social impact of masks.
Okay, there's six, this is six school days, we're talking about six, because we're all.
Over the weekend, we're talking about.
And we're still talking just K-6 or K?
The most recent K-6. Pre-K through six. Six school days, and we will revisit it again. I think.
I don't know, it's, it's the sixth grade that's while we're here right now, like, is Mr. Remen going to explain all that you hear? How I just, just straight, you're asking them all.
It just sounds like I do everything else, sometimes we gotta jump through hoops, and we're gonna jump through this super dude, but that's what we need to do. And we're gonna, we're gonna do our best again.
And the reason, I mean, I do understand the layout of middle school. There isn't a lot of, we want you to do the sixth graders and seventh and eighth graders. It's my understanding, and from what I'm in there, they're pretty much staying there in order, but, and knowing the age, that's my motion, but if anybody wants to make a different motion.
We're already separating the lunch again?
What do you mean by separate the lunch?
Well, if they have their mask off, they're sitting at lunch, we did three people to a table last year. This year, they're all sitting close together. That gonna be part of that?
We did four, that's something we can look at.
I, I'm just.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons we didn't go with that is because we weren't wearing masks at the time. I think if we are wearing masks at the time, we look at spreading them out more, then we do have that more protection. So that's something we definitely look at.
Which would mean we need to put tables in the gymnasium again. We are social distancing them in the lunchroom, K through five, as much as we can. We got four to a table versus six to a table, so.
I think for today. My personal opinion, I don't think we need to think about every scenario of what's gonna happen between now and next Wednesday. I think this one place, I think doing this one thing is going to, from my understanding, could help curb what's happening right now in our community. We just, hey, the numbers stay where they are, if they go down, we can just say we did our best. I don't think sitting here and having our administration ask us for something, and then debate every little thing is gonna. I think, we know what we need to do, we're all adults. We don't need to, I, I appreciate that you're coming from, but we're talking about eight days, seven school days, six school days. I forgot about that today. So, yes, did you have? We have, we're talking about six school days. If it helps, wonderful. If it continues to grow, then we have, I have another discussion to have next Wednesday, so.
Do we need to address the.
No, I mean.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying, it, it, it's a real, that's the reality. If you're gonna have six kids then running around in the chamber here, that.
I just don't think.
School day, have to wear masks, but now they don't, all of a sudden, because it's by law. I mean, I'm, that's.
No, you're fair enough.
I mean, I, I understand your point of frustration, but we do probably need to do something about it. Negative, it's not a question, and then almost whoever answers, the teacher will ask. I guess that's a good one, and I don't know if we're ever decided what we do.
I would imagine if I asked my staff, staff, can you guys wear some masks for seven days, six days, if we're keeping and doing? They would probably say, yes, and that means keeping our kids in school, by God, we're gonna do it for the next under days, we have to.
And it's tomorrow, based on what time it is right now. Honey.
I don't mean, I would say anything, um, to, to, um, to. So we are, I got lost on the bus. Masks in the classes.
Don't change.
But it's not, it's not a long time. But at school, we don't have to, we got a mask. We do, they're not holding. So saying this, because about that, what's the, what's the importance of having a mask? As far as being.
Eight days.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're talking about right now, we don't have, we don't have masks. What's important, what, how to ask, that's on us here.
COVID, spread by dogs, cold coughs, sneezes, anything like that, a mask will, if it's fitted properly, it will protect everybody. So hide around those, you know, just make sure they don't have it down here, down here under their nose. Um, they don't work when they're worn improperly.
So it sounds like we have quite a couple, but then I'm assuming parents would have.
Kids get so worried.
We can just get a show today. I was unaware, I was unaware.
We have enough.
So, I have a question, we got.
It's not a good one.
I think so, do we have, is there something else? We gotta. I got a box on the Thursday, a little game Thursday.
What we just ask is to send their families, something like that, so that there's not as much a chance for a close contact to happen. So that they do not have to police mask wearing.
Make sure.
At the game.
Say that one more time.
Like, just request that kids send to their families, and hope that parents are responsible to do that, so that he doesn't have to police mask wearing at our game.
I mean, there's probably not a large amount of elementary students or sixth grade students that will be at that game. I mean, there will be some, but I wouldn't say it's gonna be a large number differently. Mostly, mostly siblings, siblings, people playing. I mean, and I can stress that in my meeting with my sixth graders too, that they could do that at the game. But I was, I mean, just often address that with elementary students, if they wanna come to the game, they could have more masks. But we always encourage them to set with their families, so that, right now, it wasn't, that, that doesn't always happen either.
Um, does anyone, has anyone ever seen that has a teacher that have used a clear face mask? You can actually see the teacher smile and talk, and I don't know if that's an option, but it's better than just, you know, old mask where they can't. The case rules. Not facial, there's masks that actually have clear ones, they fit high. I do have some teachers at other schools that do clear clothes. Just an option, you have to go stand to the.
So if you guys think that people have this in place, it's six school, if you're thinking six school days, we'll be ready to go. And those of us that instead, they vaccinated, to travel the whole life, will be able to, I mean, take off our masks at school. I mean, I, I, I'm not fully thinking that it's gonna be, we're gonna be on that, I mean, I won't. But. We're really going.
I think it'll just, let's have another discussion.
And K-6, continue to wear masks, and seven, twelve, nine. That's weird. So non-vaccinated in school or high school doesn't have to wear masks. But a vaccinated teacher, now in the next school, has to wear masks. They all do it, my boss has to do it. But I'm not happy about it, honestly. It doesn't make sense, apple, that to do with apple. I'm not driving very long, everybody else, it's just. It doesn't make sense.
But it adds to A's comment too about separating two, I have kids throughout the entire school. Um, none of us wear masks, I actually had a couple of them say, you can quit school if they have to wear masks. Um, how do I explain to my little that they have to wear, and my older ones don't have to? I mean, and then my, we're unvaccinated, I don't plan to get my children vaccinated, so. We, Meliki mentioned, well, I'll just speak for myself, we, we did a vote for a full mask mandate, and it was declined. It was my understanding, from everything I've read, seen, and asked, and what my administrators have asked me, was that it was more prevalent what was happening in K-6, which are our most susceptible population in our school district, based upon their ability to get vaccinated, that is why I made that motion. I will stand behind your motion, I don't, I know, I already got plenty of tests from all of you that have had it, we can start it. It's six working days, six. Six, it's six days, we're going to revisit it, let's see how it goes. Did, did our number have we actually kind of stopped something? Who knows, it could be, I, we will get our numbers as of this day on the 8th. As, as soon as we can get, and we'll make a decision. People are gonna be mad, nobody likes it, people are gonna feel wrong, people are gonna feel right. I'm gonna get, like I said, I'll get, well, I'll get three in force, mad, but I can get a quarter of people that are glad we did something different. Just please, everybody, you expect with the decision we're trying to make, this is not easy. Nobody asked me on the board during COVID, none of us got elected during this, trust me, none of us did. So I just ask for some grace, everybody's peak, nice. We are, we are here to get our kids in school, we are not gonna bitch about who can wear masks and who shouldn't, and stop there, cause my kid, my kid, and I'm vaccinated, and I'm not vaccinated, stop! Please, and I apologize for cursing. This is not easy for anyone. We have done the best we can, and we're trying to support our administration. Six days, if your kid can't handle over six days, keep him home. Which is, that goes against everything we're fighting for. If your kid is getting bullied, unfortunately, all the parents out there listening, talk to your parents, and tell them to stop. This is not enough, we are on the tail, we're tired of it. I'm losing enough of my room drop to have to deal with this for five hours a night. Be kind, everyone just be nice. Do what's right for you and your family, we are trying to help. It's six days, talk about it in this day.
How are we, everyone, the health department, the director, who is saying it's fine?
They don't have to let me up here, I'll say.
When does this go into effect? If this goes into effect tomorrow morning, will there be a school alert out? And how about the people on the bus, will we, will the bus drivers have to set a mask for those kids?
Cross the transition, so.
So we're still, no masks on the bus? Is that right, or we are wearing masks on the bus?
No masks on the bus.
No masks on the bus? Wait, you said.
Okay, so K-6, K-6 will have masks on.
Okay. He said K-6.
You said in the building.
I said building.
I'm not saying you can't make that.
No, that's. I'm not making any motions, I'm, I'm a shithead.
Well, I mean, I've been report, so, only question, they extend K-6, and that's me, and it would include buses up until September 8th, or are they already discussed?
Pre-K, K-6.
Thank you, well then, what was the last one?
Pre-K.
Yeah, K-6.
Sorry. Yes.
I.
Can you hear that, Ren?
And I think to address my question there, maybe, I think it was, I thought we were talking about the discussion will happen tomorrow, you know, a notification about tomorrow, so really, it would be, implemented tomorrow would be.
Thank you, Jeff. Pre-K, 6, pass from the buses. To, I don't know, to, to.
The last question. I make a motion to adjourn.